Good evening and happy birthday to Dr. Seuss. He actually is on the dais tonight and the cat in the hat has made his appearance. I was going to, but he's outdone me, so I'm very proud of him. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, March 2, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purposes of reviewing that portion of the Thursday, March 5, 2020 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have the policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to two items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of the meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Please do that now. I'm checking, I'm looking, is everybody doing it? Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. Frances Romero, Frances, there she is. Thank you for being here, Frances. Where did I, I missed it. In attendance this evening. We also have, we also have John Rosenthal, the House of Representatives, who's here with us. Mr. Rosenthal, thank you for being here. The recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation point of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 5, 2020. At this time, we would be proceeding to public comments, but no one signed up, so 2A, we're going to be moving on to... That's it, right? By now, we're going down to 5A. The administration, dead gum, I'll tell you what, the cat is over me already. The administration will provide an oral report on community programs. Ms. Leslie Francis, Ms. Irene Ruiz.
Mr. Covey, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. Tonight, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the Community Programs Department. Community Programs manages two of the district's childcare programs. Club Rewind, which is before and after-school care and provided for grades pre-K through five at all of our elementary school campuses, and five early learning centers. These early learning centers are licensed daycare facilities for employees' children and grandchildren ages six weeks through four years old. This department is unique in that not only does it provide a service to our currently enrolled families and employees, it is a revenue-generating department. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Irene Ruiz, Director of Community Programs, who will share with you all we have to cheer about in community programs.
Thank you, Leslie. Good evening, Mr. Covey, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the great things that are happening in community programs. As Leslie mentioned, Club Rewind is the before-and-after-school program which operates at 55 elementary campuses with a combined program at Joel and Hoover Elementarys. Our goal is to provide a fun environment for students as they start or end their school day while generating revenue for the district. Serving approximately 4,200 students, the program provides engaging activities in the areas of team-building, STEM challenges, cultural appreciation, social skills, and much more. Club Rewind is comprised of approximately 275 staff members who love working with children and making a positive impact on the children we serve. Each campus is staffed with a program manager, a program clerk, and program leaders who lead student activities. Our Club Rewind employees are held to the same high standards as all CFISD employees. Each staff member works hard to provide a safe environment while delivering consistent curriculum across the district to ensure the same fun and exciting opportunities to all Club Rewind students. We are proud of the wide range of ages, ethnic origins, and backgrounds of our staff members who serve as positive role models for our CFISD students and community. These Club Rewind staff members are held responsible for implementing the curriculum and schedule, which includes rotations through various activities during program hours. Activities include time spent on academics, physical activities in the gym or outdoors, and structured lessons on various topics. We also align activities with many district and campus initiatives. It's exciting to see staff and students showing appreciation to campus staff on various appreciation days, participating in Red Ribbon Week or Dr. Seuss Week, and celebrating the 100th Day of School with fun science experiments. Students may also showcase their talents during our annual talent show and lights-on after-school events, which parents are encouraged to attend. Every Club Rewind program utilizes PBIS strategies by implementing the PBIS matrix from each campus and focusing on positive reinforcement to provide praise and recognition to students. Using consistent language across the school day and into Club Rewind sets our students up for success with clear expectations and allows for smooth transitions to and from the school day. We are also excited about the implementation of the No Place for Hate initiative across all Club Rewind programs. Our students, staff, and parents have signed No Place for Hate pledges, and students have participated in activities to show appreciation for each other's differences and demonstrate kindness to each other. We are proud to provide an affordable childcare option for parents in addition to the convenience of students remaining on campus before and after school. A market analysis is conducted each year to ensure we remain competitive with local daycare facilities. We also offer discounted rates for students on the free or reduced lunch program and children of CFISD employees. Not only do we provide care during the school year, we also provide care throughout the summer, offering exciting summer opportunities for our students. Summer Camp is a licensed childcare program available on a weekly basis for incoming kindergarten through eighth-grade students. This camp provides a variety of fun activities throughout each day, which include physical activities, team-building, STEM activities, art, and even special visitors from the Science Resource Center. The students also get to enjoy off-campus adventures by going on field trips. We offer two camp locations each year, and this summer, the camp will operate at Matske Elementary and Arnold Middle School. In addition to the regular summer camp on the previous slide, Camp Captivate allows students to experience a week-long camp in a specialized area such as cooking, science, sports, coding, slime, or even space camp adventures. These theme-based enrichment camps are facilitated by CFISD teachers who share a passion for the camp they choose to teach. Spillane Middle School will host Camp Captivate during summer 2020 over five designated weeks. We encourage parents to visit our website to learn more about these fun summer adventures. Now brace yourself for some cuteness overload. The CFISD Early Learning Centers, or ELCs, are proud to serve CFISD's youngest learners, starting at just six weeks old. These licensed centers provide quality childcare for CFISD employees and are open from 6:00 AM to 5:30 PM. The centers provide a safe and nurturing environment where children learn through play and exploration while educating the whole child. There are five ELC locations throughout the district. ELC 1 and ELC 2 are freestanding centers. ELC 1 is located near Pridgen Stadium, and ELC 2 is located near Owens Elementary. The other three ELCs are housed in portable buildings and are located at Andre Elementary School and Telgi and Barker Transportation Centers. The ELCs employ 72 staff members, and each center is staffed with a center director, ELC instructors, and ELC aides. Like Club Rewind, we conduct a yearly market analysis to ensure our rates are competitive and affordable. Staff members must complete at least 24 hours of training to meet childcare licensing minimum standards. While the training topics are extensive, some topics include child growth and development, CPR and first aid, curriculum and age-appropriate activities, and active supervision. Our pre-K instructors also attend the district's Staff Development Week to train on the same high-quality curriculum as the district's full-day pre-K. Last year, in our infant-through-three-year-old classrooms, we implemented the Frog Street Curriculum, which focuses on intentional instruction in the domains of physical, social, emotional, language, and cognitive development. Through engaging, age-appropriate lessons and activities, we maximize learning opportunities for our ELC students during these early stages of development. I am especially proud of the recent collaboration between the curriculum and instruction and community programs departments to align curriculum and activities with the district's full-day pre-K program. Our goal is to prepare our little learners for kindergarten and beyond by teaching the whole child and encouraging children to learn through play. Learning kindergarten sight words, subitizing numbers, and conducting science experiments are just a few of the academic concepts we focus on to build a strong foundation. After months of financial analysis, it was determined that the Eldridge ELC model could not sustain profitability due to its limited capacity. We were excited to announce the opening of Andre ELC this school year, following the closing of Eldridge ELC, to provide the childcare needs for employees on the west side of the district. This pilot program has allowed us to serve more children in a three-portable building model. This model has fostered a partnership with the campus, including collaboration with primary staff and the use of campus resources such as the library and workroom. For the campus, this model serves as a great recruitment and retention tool by providing convenient onsite childcare. From our infant classrooms to our pre-K classrooms, we focus on providing children with a language and print-rich environment to support their development through the years. Even our youngest learners utilize Promethean panels as an educational tool to enhance The Community Programs Department has been working hard to recruit applicants and train new employees to best meet the needs of our students. Last year, we started visiting with ready-set teach and child-guidance students at each high school to inform them of the opportunities available working with children in CFISD after they graduate. Many of our staff members work in Club Rewind or at the ELCs while attending college to obtain their teacher certification. We love providing these staff members with rich experiences and strong foundational skills that they will utilize throughout their careers. It is the greatest compliment when we see our former staff members hired as classroom teachers or paraprofessionals. From our youngest learners to our most seasoned staff, Community Programs provides opportunities for all to learn and grow within our programs. Thank you so much for allowing me to share with you all we have to cheer about in community programs. I'd like to recognize our Community Programs staff members who are here tonight, if they'll please stand. I'd also like to recognize Laura Ann Nowosinski, who is here as well. We appreciate her partnership with our new ELC program. At this time, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Board, do we have any questions or comments? Julie?
Thank you very much for the very thorough and informative presentation. I did have the opportunity to visit both the Club Rewind camps over the summer and the ELCs. I visited two ELCs this semester, and it's just fantastic to have these summer opportunities for our students to continue that learning process. You know, they avoid the summer slide, they're engaged, they're in a safe, engaging environment, which is wonderful, and then to have the ELCs as a service to our employees is fantastic. That is a really strong recruiting tool for us, to be able to offer to our staff a safe, loving, educational, wonderful environment for their little, their children. So, thank you for all you all do.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else? John, I'm sorry.
Thanks for the report. During the summer, don't we also handle and provide food for the programs that we have?
Yes, sir. For our summer sites, so depending on the campus where we host our summer programs, if it is a Title I campus that provides free meals for their Title I students, then absolutely we can provide that. We do not have that information yet for this summer. Chrissy, do we have information on that yet for?
Darren is not ready.
Okay, yes. So, as soon as those locations are released, then we will know if we'll be able to continue providing the free meals. But I know at Matske, last year, we were able to provide breakfast and lunch.
Ms. Blackshear?
I just wanted to echo and add on to what Ms. Heinemann said. What a treasure these programs are, both for our employees and for our parents in the community, to know that their children aren't being transported from school to another daycare center and know that they are well taken care of. So, thank you for this extra service that you add for our community.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Anyone else? Well, my grandchildren have done the Club Rewind, and I really appreciate everything that y'all have done there. It's tremendous, and they enjoy going, so that's a real proof. I appreciate y'all's report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, before we go on to the next report, and I apologize to Ms. Hall because we had talked about putting a little paragraph in here, so I'm going to read this, and I overlooked it because the cat was pushing me over here on the other side. So, before we proceed with the reports portion, or the rest of the reports portion of this agenda, I would like to let the viewing audience know that each month during the board work sessions, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under About Us, District Improvement Plan/Goals. Thank you for including that, and we will be stating that so that anyone that is watching will also be able to take a look at what our board monitoring system is doing. 5B, the administration will provide a written report on the end-of-the-year academic performance and literacy assessment of elementary students in grades K through 2 for 2018-19. Dr. Linda Macias, Latisha Bard, Jennifer Jones. The actress? No, I'm just kidding.
President Covey, really, this is if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is our annual report that we provide for you every year. We are a little late with, we usually try to bring this to you in February. We're a little late with it because we're trying to, the numbers were just not adding up, and so we had to work with the company to see what the norming information was. I will share with you that if you look at the report, you can see that we basically have maintained the success of our students. You do see a slight dip in first grade from an 88 to an 87, and in researching the information, we had a big aha moment in that we don't have as many kinder, summer kinder students attending Camp Summit as we have in the other grades. So, we're going to make sure that we beef up our kinder-going-to-first this summer as well. And then when you look at the second grade, you see that we had a 1% percentage dip there as well, and we compared other information like the individual reading levels, and when we looked at that, we actually increased. This is probably the last year that we'll be bringing this report to you in this format with the new requirements of House Bill 3. We are even going, I was at a reading academy training today, and so we will no longer be able to select from the commissioners list. There's going to be one test that we will all have to use and report on. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Blackshear?
Ms. Macias, or Dr. Macias, in looking at this, the second grade, let's see, five years ago was at 89, and now they're at 85. So, while it's not much of a, it's not a drastic drop from the previous year, but each year it's been dropping. Is there a reason for that?
This is the one that I was sharing, Ms. Blackshear, that as we looked at the data from the company that we're using, that we've had issues with the norming of that data. So, we look at the data from the other assessments that we have, like our individual reading levels, and we see a discrepancy there. And so, I think that as we all move forward with one assessment statewide, I think that'll be a better way for us to show how we're performing, how we're performing across the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
Dr. Macias, when you take a look at the data, do you disaggregate the data and take a look at this on a cluster basis? And are you looking for any outliers, either for the positive or those where we have opportunities?
The answer to that is yes. We disaggregated based on campus and based on cluster, and then we look, and look at all that information, all the way down to our different groups of students and which group it may be performing lower than another, and then we provide support to our campuses as needed.
Thank you.
Dr. Macias, when you refer to cluster, can you explain to the audience what a cluster is?
Roy's team, Dr. Garcia's team, actually groups schools based on likeness. So, those that are more liked with demographics are grouped more together so that they can work together and share ideas. So, we look at that group, and then we look at the schools individually.
And those clusters actually work together, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, or everybody okay? Thank you, Dr. Macias. 5C, the administration will provide a written report on the 2020 summer school plans for elementary, middle school, and high school. We have questions tonight. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Heather Bergman? Anyone? We're okay? All right, moving ahead. 5D, the administration will provide a written report on the district's participation in purchasing cooperatives for 2018-19 physical year. Again, questions only. Presenter is Mr. Bill Powell. Do we have any questions? Mr. Powell, are you back there?
Yes, sir.
Can you, if you'd just take a minute? Basically, I was looking at the Byboard through Tasby, and I know that you're familiar, as I know Holly is familiar, that Byboard is making some drastic changes in what they're doing. How is, is that going to affect you guys, or do you know what I'm talking about?
No, sir, I'm not. I do not.
Okay, all right, well...
Drastic changes as far as in purchasing?
Yeah, it's basically going to be a whole new format, right, Holly? Board book. I'm sorry, I was board book. I'm thinking wrong. Okay.
So, yeah, there's nothing about purchases that I'm aware of that they're changing.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming up, Bill.
Anytime, sir.
It's bothering. I'm not going to look at him. It's just, it's just a senior moment. I'm okay. The Board will now review the following consensus action items. 6A, the consensus, the Board will consider approving tax refunds of $500 a grader by Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Do we have any questions or concerns? Can we move that to consent? 6B, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 10, 2020 regular board meeting. Do we have any questions or concerns? Can we move that to consent? The Board will now review the following non-consensus action items. 7, action items non-consent. 7A, the Board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. BE local board meetings revise. CDA local board revenues, investments revise. CH local purchasing and acquisition revise. Do we have any questions about this? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. 7B, the Board will consider approving the right-of-way dedication to Harris County for a signal light at the intersection of Klugee Road and Old Klugee Road at Hamilton Middle School and authorize a superintendent or designee to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Do we have any questions for Mr. Morgan? We okay? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. 7C, the Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize a superintendent-designee to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Number 1, 2019 Holbrook and Post Elementary Schools and Kayla Middle School renovations. Number 2, 2019 Feast Elementary School renovation. Number 3, 2019 Copeland, Gleason, and Sheridan Elementary School renovations. Do we have any questions or concerns? May we move that to consent? It's a bad night, Matt. Go ahead.
It's never a bad...
Mr. Morgan?
It's never a bad night for you, President Covey.
Yeah.
Never. President Covey, members of the Board, Dr. Henry, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the projects that we're bringing to the Board tonight. The proposal number 1, Holbrook, Post, and Kayla, those are $2,014. We're finishing up Phase 6. And just a brief overview of the scope, at Holbrook, we're doing some casework, some chillers, and air handler unit. At Post, we're replacing the asphalt parking lot with concrete, and we're doing a clinic eye wash station. At Kayla, those are the, that's the middle school track work that we're doing to bring it up to district standards. And we're also, if you look at Package 3, we have Gleason included in there. That's 14 scope as well. And at Gleason, we're doing replacement of a cooling tower and some eye washes. But if you remember at the bond presentation last month, I talked to you about combining 14-19 scope in order to take advantage of economies of scale, but more importantly, we only want to disturb the campus once. It's very hard to move a campus out, move them back in, come back a few years later, and do a renovation again, so we're trying to combine that scope. So, at Feast, Copeland, and Sheridan, those are three of those projects where we have 2,014. where we have 2014, 2019 scope. And just a brief overview of the scope, we're going to do the security for the open concept classroom, and that's where we're going to create corridors, create pods of four to eight classrooms. They'll have doors with intruder lock sets, classroom phones, and additional lockdown buttons inside there. We'll also, doing the segmentation, created the need for us to add additional classrooms. So, each of these schools will get four additional classrooms. We're also going to bring our art and music rooms up to district standards. We're going to improve the security at the front desk. We're going to add additional card readers on all exterior doors. We're going to add additional impact-resistant glass in high-traffic areas. We're going to add the classroom phones. These projects will also include the security fencing and a furniture replacement. In addition, all three of these campuses get a kitchen renovation. And we plan to complete this work in August of 2021. So, it'll be almost a two-year project, just because of the scope. Holbrook, Post, and Sheridan are located within the 500-year floodplain. We did not have any damage during Harvey at those locations. We are increasing the detention at Copeland and Feast to accommodate the building additions. We increased the detention at Sheridan in the Thornton package that we did last summer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Yes, sir. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you for anticipating the Harvey question and answering it. One thing that you did not identify, as part of the construction, are we doing this in an alternative fashion? Are we enhancing sanitation equipment? Are we doing that out of operations?
Well, we're doing the enhancement for sanitation. I'm assuming you're speaking about the coronavirus and everything that's going on. We are currently, our operations team is installing hand sanitizers in every classroom. We've also got hand sanitizers, if you look across the bathroom, from the bathroom here, hand sanitizing stations scattered throughout the district, or throughout the campus, in front of bathrooms, the cafeteria. So, we're taking those measures for sanitation.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? When, Matt, did you say when you're kicking this off on the renovations?
The Post, Holbrook, and Kayla will start this summer. For Feast, Gleason, I'm sorry, Feast, Copeland, and Sheridan, that won't start until September, probably September. We took a mobilization credit because there's really not a lot that they can do over the summer because of the extent of the segmentation. They can't go in and do it in one summer. So, it's going to take two summers. So, we took a credit on that contract to allow them to mobilize a little bit later.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the report.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, I think I showed this at the last, at the bond update, but this is what the security for open concepts will look like. It'll be a pod of four to eight classrooms. They'll have doors with intruder lock sets, all new furniture at all the locations. So, it should be, it's a very major renovation for all these schools that we're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. 7D, the board... Oh, can we move that to consent? Thank you. 7D, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda items. 1, Blue Cat Appliances and Maintenance. 2, Cisco Enterprise Agreement License. 3, Computer-Aided Dispatch Report Management System. 4, Electronic Technology Equipment Repair, Parts, and Repair Service. Number 5, Fertilizer and Pesticides. Number 6, Firewall Refresh Project. Number 7, Furniture and Equipment. Number 8, Harold Road Middle School Project E-Rate. Number 9, Internet and Related Services for ISC Network Core Project E-Rate. Number 10, School Buses. Do we have any questions or concerns? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Move to consent. 7E, the board will consider approving the administration's recommendation for the 2020-2021 Open and Closed Campuses Designations for Student Transfers. We have a brief presentation. Teresa Hall and Kristi Jaron.
Mr. Covey, Board of Trustees, this is our annual agenda item where the administration provides our recommendations for the campuses we believe should be designated as open campuses for voluntary student transfers. Ms. Jaron will just briefly provide you with an overview of the criteria we use to make that determination and then identify the campuses for the 2021 school year, our communication plan, and that window for students to request those transfers. So, Ms. Jaron?
Evening. Like she says, it's that time of year. Based on enrollment projections and building capacities, the Office of Planning and Services would like to share our recommendations for the campuses that will be open for student transfers for the 2021 school year. Now, remember, our goal is to provide as many options as possible within the constraints of capacities to accomplish the student and parent's preferences. Now, I'd like to just remind everyone of the open and closed policy and the transfer policy. Just have about, I think, 67 slides will go over those. Just kidding, like five. You still like boundary changes. Okay. Transfer regulations. Each year, the board is asked to approve our recommendations for open campuses. Once identified as an open campus, Student Services uses a tiered process with three different levels, without reading this policy to you. Number 1 is referring to any school that is open to all CFISD residents and employees, and those are called Tier 1 campuses. Number 2 is referring to campuses that will be closed to all new transfers but will be available for all CFISD employees only, and those are called Tier 2 campuses. And then number 3 is referring to campuses that will be closed to all new transfers but will be only available for CFISD employees who are assigned to a facility or building located within the attendance zone of the school requested. So, in summary, once approved by the board, all campuses will be identified as either a Tier 1, 2, or 3 campus. Okay. Once the board approves the list of open campuses, Student Services will soon be calculating the number of open spots available for each campus based on the tier system. Here's the timeline provided by Student Services. If the board approves this list, Student Services will advertise the campuses that are open starting this Friday, March 6. And April 1, registrars and Student Services will start accepting applications. And then on June 1, will be the deadline for anybody to apply. Student Services will be getting open campus and transfer information out in a variety of different ways, as you can see by the list provided. So, we use all of those means in order to share that what campuses are available and open. Transfer applications are available in the registrar's office on all campuses or on the district website. A transfer application must be submitted to the campus registrar or Student Services by Monday, June 1 of 2020. And again, they'll be available as early as April 1. That's a Wednesday. Okay, the Office of Planning and Services is recommending the following. Five high schools, five middle schools, and 26 elementary schools to be open for transfers for all CFISD residents for the 2021 school year, which is again 36 open campuses available to residents and employees. And the campuses are... I can read them all. We have, again, 26 elementary, five middle, and five high. Last year, we had 36 campuses, 38 campuses. This year, 36. So, we are...
Kristi, why don't you read those out?
Sure, absolutely. Adam, Andre, Bain, Copeland, Danish, Durier, Emmett, Farnie, Feast, Fraser, Gleason, Hare Grove, Hamilton, Hoover, Pre-K through 2, Joel, 3 through 5, Kirk, Lampkin, Lee, Metcalf, Post, Reed, A. Robinson, Sampson, Swinkie, Walker, and Wilburn. All of those are elementary. The five middle school campuses are Campbell, Dean, Goodson, Libby, and Row. And the high school campuses will be Cy Fair, Cy Creek, Cy Falls, Cypress Springs, and Langham Creek. Do y'all have any questions?
Board, do we have any questions? Yes, sir, Mr.... Yes.
Yeah. So, you said last year we had 38. Now, we have 36. So, of the ones that weren't, or that were on last year, maybe not on this year, and people, their kids are there, are they allowed to... Do they still stay at that school, correct?
They get to stay.
Okay. And then for the transfers, they provide their own transportation?
Yes.
And as far as the high schools, we have, they have to adhere to the UIL?
That is correct.
Varsity play, stuff like that? Okay. Awesome job. Once again, thanks.
And actually, all of... Using your hands, it's hard. You only have three fingers.
But those are great questions, Mr. Ryan. And all of that information is outlined on the application. We make certain parents, when they submit an application, are aware of those rules about transportation is not provided and that they are responsible for understanding any UIL implications related to a transfer.
And can you share why did we reduce the number of schools?
Well, we did make some boundary changes this year. An ascending campus is a closed campus. So, there's some campuses that may fall below a percentage that determines whether they're open or closed. But because they're ascending campus, we keep them closed so that kids can't just transfer right back once we tell them they have to go to another school.
Thornton would be a great example, Dr. Ogletree. We're trying to provide significant relief to Thornton. And so, Thornton will be closed this year because we're sending approximately 450 students, 500, to Row Middle School.
And Anthony, another large, almost 700. So, again, this...
Exactly.
Any other questions? Mr. Jackson?
A couple of quick ones. First, please explain the definition of capacity at a campus. And then, secondly, at each one of the three levels, do we have Title I as well as non-Title I schools that if our parents choose to transfer their students, they have the ability to pick?
Let me answer the first one. Capacity was determined, I think it was around 2012, 2013. Different formulas were used with facilities and construction based on classroom size. And in conjunction with, Mr. Sprague may be able to answer more specifically, but the capacity of the building is, whether they're open or closed, is if it's less than 95% of its capacity, it is an opened or Tier 1 campus. If it's between that 95%, and for high schools, it's 104; middle schools is 109; elementary schools is 114. They're Tier 2 campuses. And then high school, above 105, or just Tier 3; above 110 for middle school, they're Tier 3; and above 115, they are Tier 3. So, that's what makes them employees only for the Tier 3 and the Tier 2, and then Tier 1 open to anybody. If that answers your question?
It does. And the other question is, for elementary, middle, and high school, do parents have the ability to pick either a Title I or non-Title I campus at each of the three levels?
We don't really make the designations based on that, but as you can see from the list, we have a combination of Title I campuses and non-Title I campuses that are open. We do not designate any of our high schools as Title I, so it would only be a designation at elementary and middle. But there are, you know, there's a combination of Title and non-Title campuses listed.
So, we are, in fact, giving our parents considerable choice and latitude should they want to take advantage of it. Thank you.
Right.
Anyone else? Can we move this to consent? Okay. The board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. 1, DFFA local reduction in force, financial exigency revise. Don't, I don't, don't do that to me. I never have liked that word. So, do we have any suggestions? Or I don't need a suggestion. Does anybody have any questions? We're okay? Can we move that to consent so I don't have to repeat it? Okay. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 5, 2020. We are adjourned.